All right, moving on. Teacher, staff, and community comments.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jenna Laslow. I'm a Rettentown School parent. We, a couple, one other parent and I were here a few months ago, I feel like, but maybe longer, asking about having recess for fifth through eighth graders. And so, we, I, here I have a petition with some parent signatures from Rettentown School. And so what we're asking for, again, is maybe in your planning for next year, that we have a 30-minute recess time that's scheduled every day for all students at Rettentown. So, I'm gonna leave those with you, and I'm not staying. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any?
Yeah, actually, a few months ago, I came and asked for a leave of absence to apply to a Fulbright program. I received word last night that I did not get the Fulbright grant, but I wanted to thank you for listening and for granting me the possible leave. I won't be needing to take it, unfortunately, but I know a lot more now, and I'm glad that I applied, and I may, might apply later in the future, but it was a great experience, so thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. No, I'm sorry we didn't get it.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right. Moving on. Old business. Elevator update. Is there anything new from Louis or Kelly?
Louis is gonna be joining us in a couple minutes, so...
So, we'll wait for that?
Or I can just, I did touch base, I know that NFB, I believe, is that the name that's on that?
NBF, I think.
NBF, sorry, I always mix them up. There, we're waiting for them to provide us with an estimate, so we haven't heard yet, but life safety for upstairs should be installed next week over break.
And Louis just joined, I think. Maybe he can't quite hear us yet?
Louis, can you hear us?
Well, I'll ask you, Sarah, maybe you know and maybe you don't. Do you know when we're expecting that? Because I feel like we've been waiting for them for a really long time, and that's kind of...
Yeah, I mean, I can even go back, and Kelly had spoke to them shortly after our last board meeting, and they just said, "You're on the list." Did not give us an estimate, so I can, I can ask him if he can at least inquire about approximate date, month, something.
So, I guess, should we just move on?
Yeah.
For now?
That might be Louis on the phone. Louis, is that you on the phone?
I was having trouble with the audio. I couldn't hear you guys.
He just left.
With a link. Is there a Wi-Fi password?
You have to get one set up through.
I can get you one in a second, but it's only good for one day, for today.
What if people didn't hear us on that?
Hold on, do I have to pay for it? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I don't know.
You just had Neil in here, too.
Yeah, we just had Neil in here.
Marcia, can you hear us? So you couldn't hear us at all?
That's, yeah.
Oh.
Audio, well, feed wasn't working.
That happened before.
Go to the three dots, the settings, and see if you need to switch the, the mic. Right next to the, or, sorry, you can do it from there, too, so...
Right next to the hang-up button.
No sound.
Next to, I'm sorry, where are the hang-up button? Over here.
Yeah, you go to settings.
Can I just write and let them know that there's...
Yeah, go to, and just... I had this problem last time.
Yep.
The very bottom under settings.
Sorry.
Just checked it.
Check the microphone. Let's try the second one.
Can you hear us now?
Nope, it's not going through. Let's try that. No, if you still leave the microphone, not the speakers.
That's fine. Can you hear us now?
Now, you'd see the, to the little blue circle to the right would...
Light up.
See, fluctuate if there's...
What is this plugged into?
Is it on?
There's a...
No.
Our last time, we unplugged that, and then we just went right off of the...
Screen? Or the thing up there? I don't know why this keeps happening.
Hard to argue with that.
I heard that.
Neil's coming.
So, they can speak to us, but...
We'll have time to give you the...
Problem is, they can't hear us, but they...
Right. Hmm.
Sarah, give me a, give me a plug this mic last time, and then it worked.
Neil spent a while, and he was here tonight, and said everything's working. He's walking in right now.
Okay.
So I don't want to touch anything until he gets here.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're gonna take a five-minute recess to work on the audio.
I'll type that in the chat.
You will, thank you. All right, so for those that are online that missed the first part of the meeting, we had a singing presentation by the actors and of The Little Mermaid that's going to be shown here tomorrow and Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. And then, we had a member of the public give us a petition asking for, when we're going through schedules for next year, to include recess for all grades for 30 minutes. And we asked about an elevator update, and we're told that we're still waiting for the NBF architects to get back to us with their specs and bid price. So, we are moving on to, and we also amended the agenda a bit by removing the policies and the solar update for tonight. So we are at old business and board retreat and board meeting schedule. So, one of the jobs of the board is to get together once a year in a board retreat, and we've typically done that to discuss goals for the upcoming year. And in the past, we have declined to have a meeting in July, and I would like to propose that instead of missing the meeting, that we use that as our board update, our board retreat, to go over, reflect on the goals from this year, how we did, and then talk about what we'd like to do for next year, so it'll help us set out our priorities for, before budget season starts. Does anyone have any other comments or thoughts about it?
Like a regular board meeting?
It'll, it'll be a, a board meeting, but it will, it's just a little bit of a different format, talking more about board goals and reflecting on last year's goals, a little bit less rigid, I guess.
And it's July 11th, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
Like a public meeting, is that what you're proposing?
Public's, public's allowed to come. We have, in the past, sometimes changed venues. We usually bring in dinner. It's usually more of a two- to three-hour meeting versus a one- to two-hour meeting, so we usually do dinner. In the past, they've gone out, last year, we just brought food in. What are your thoughts? How about we go around the table and just give thoughts? Do you wanna?
I'll do it, and I'm easy.
Okay. Abby?
I'm here that week, so I'll be good.
Tim, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, that should be good. I'm fine with it. I mean, it's a, something we'll do at one point or another, right?
Right.
So I'm fine with having just one meeting that month versus two in August or something, but...
Which is what we did last year.
So, that far, I, I don't go that far out. Nor do I handle my own social calendar, so...
Colin?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a big fan of retreats and alternate sites, just to get different, get the rigidity of a board meeting off, but I'm good with whatever the group wants to do. I'd be happy to propose, you know, hosting everyone out at my lake house, if that's on the table, but other than that, I'm definitely for an extended meeting, talk about goals in, in a more relaxed setting. I find it's very useful for boards to reset.
I'm pretty sure it has to be open to the public, though, so I don't know.
Depends on the purpose of the retreat, so...
So if it's, the purpose of the retreat was just to reflect on last year's goals and discuss new goals?
If there'd be no action taken at the retreat, then you wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be a public meeting. But if we're taking any sort of action, where it'd be goals, then it would have to be a public setting.
So if we're trying to...
Or make public, make it a little public.
If we're trying to create our goals, then that would be an action?
Yes.
So, I don't know if that would work.
So what date do you got circled there?
It's July 11th is the board retreat. The, the circle's for me, for the next topic.
What's that?
The circle's for next topic.
Oh.
The lake house sounds like a good idea, but I mean, just do that, you know?
We could open it to the public, I mean...
We could, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, action would be taken, could be taken at the next meeting.
We could approve the goals at the next meeting.
You, you could discuss, and then, at a next public meeting, could then discuss...
Formulate some.
Yeah, right. If you wanted, that's...
I mean, in a previous life, on the city school board, we'd have a retreat where there's no action items, but we're brainstorming, not setting goals per se, but, you know, whiteboarding and talking about what we thought on a more relaxed area, and then brought everything back to the public forum, but...
I would be amenable to that. We can talk about how, what we're doing for food at the meeting beforehand, the June meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, that works. Thank you. And then, my next question, we're talking about the board meeting schedule, which was in everyone's packet. The following meeting, August 8th, both Sarah and I are not going to be here at that meeting. So, my question is, to start with Chris, because I know you were trying to keep all your meetings in two weeks, is it, is there a possibility to move it, or is it rigid? I could potentially join virtually, it's just...
August, you're saying? They usually don't do one in the summer?
That's what we just said. Instead of doing that, we're doing the board retreat for the July meeting, so that way we...
July?
Yeah, that's gonna be the board retreat.
Okay.
So it will not be a formal meeting.
So you're looking at the August 8th date, and let's see what the availability is?
It's possible to move it potentially to the next week. The third week.
Sure, we, we could if we need to, so, but...
Does anyone...
That kind of goes into this, stretching out over the course of three weeks, but if that's the first week of August, we, you know, the only thing we have is the GRCSU on the first, but there's nothing on the second or the third, but if you wanted to keep it on Tuesdays...
Well, I'm, I'm okay going...
So it's real up to the board, so...
Yeah, other week, too. What is everyone scheduled, the week before the 8th and the week after?
Wait, the 5th, I'm at...
I'm free.
You're free?
Yeah, back to work at that time.
I would assume I'm free.
When does school start?
August 31st, I think, ish?
30th, I think.
30th or 31st, whatever the Wednesday is. So the 8th is...
Definitely the week before.
You would prefer to do the week before?
Second or the 3rd.
A second or a third? When, so Wednesday or Thursday would be better for anybody?
No.
Do you have a preference?
Just checking my calendar real quick to see what I would be able to...
I should probably check mine, too, actually. I was looking at the week after. The SU meeting's on August 1st. So, yeah, I, I would prefer the second, if that's possible, the day after the SU meeting.
I'm not here that day.
You're not here that day?
No.
Are you here the Thursday?
That Wednesday, yes.
We can do the, the Thursday, then, if that works for everybody else, the 3rd?
I have no idea what I'll be, but I should be here.
Okay, so instead of August 8th, it will be August 3rd?
Okay.
3rd.
3rd. And expect that that will be a bit of a longer meeting, because we'll be catching up on all the things that we normally do at a meeting, that we're not doing in July, plus adopting the goals. Okay?
Can you clarify the dates again, just so I have them, Dina? So no July?
So there's no July official meeting?
Yep.
We are going to have a retreat?
Okay.
The same night. And then, August 3rd?
Okay.
Instead of August 8th. And then, otherwise, it's the second Tuesday of the month for every other month.
I'm not gonna be available on the 3rd, sorry.
You're not gonna be available on the 3rd?
But you can still have the meeting without me.
Oh, no.
I'm out of the country.
So should we move it?
Out of the country?
So then, should we move it to the 3rd week?
Well, do, if, if that works, right, but, but it's just me, I don't want to mess everyone up, so I can...
I don't know if it matters for everybody else. It might be better for you to be there, since we're not having a July meeting.
So, sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay. Are you gonna be back the 3rd week?
Yes, I, I get back the 7th.
I'm, I'm free that week, too.
You are, too?
You just happened to pick the two weeks.
So, the following week, we could do it on the Tuesday, the 15th, to keep it on a Tuesday? It's 8:15 work for everybody?
Sorry about that.
That's all right, I'm sorry.
Ah, as of now, yeah. Potentially be gone, but I can zoom in, so...
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, so it will now be August 15th instead of August 8th. And Sarah, that's good for you, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, thank you. All right. So, moving on. New business, summer programming, and after-school update.
Okay, so Louis, Chris, and I have been speaking with the Boys and Girls Club. We put everything out to bid for procurement, procurement. We only got one bid back from the Boys and Girls Club, so right now, we're just waiting to touch base with them. So that ended Friday, so Louis sent an email to them Monday, so we're hoping to have summer school July 5th through August 4th. And then, we are also hoping to have summer school, general education summer school, and that's usually budgeted for every year by our local budget. Louis has been able to, Louis, Lisa, and Chris have been able to fund that through Esser Funds last year and again this year. So I have two middle school teachers that are signed up to teach that, that's in the contracts that are presented this evening, and I'm just waiting for a couple, to see if a couple elementary teachers would like to do that. So summer school, or tutoring, you may call it, will be July 10th through the 28th, from 9:00 to noon.
And what is the timing for the July 5th to the August 4th?
I don't, I didn't write that down, I'm sorry.
It's an 8 o'clock start time, and a 3:30 end time.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, Louis.
Some of the details were still, we're still working on. We don't have the contract yet, so we're still working on some of the refining details. And we can, once we, once we finalize those and have a contract in hand, we can update the board at the next board meeting with all, all of the...
So, you don't have the contract yet for the summer. Are you also setting something up for, right now, like the last few months of school, for after-school?
No, I think that they have to hire, they have to hire staff, and they wouldn't be able to do that, but our hope is that we will have after-school care for the fall.
Correct, yeah, this is for a starting July.
Louis, since your audio is working now, did you have any more information on the elevator update that we went over earlier, other than we're still waiting for the architects?
No, that's it at this point. Until, until the architect gives us, gives us those specs, then we can go back out and hopefully secure a vendor, and then once we have that information, we can bring that back to the board.
Do you have...
At this time, the specs are something else, we're...
When was your last contact with them, do you know?
Kelly has been the one that's been contacting them. My contact with Kelly was a few years ago.
I was just curious if you had an ETA of when we might get them, or if you could have an ETA by next meeting.
Yeah, I will follow up with Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for that. Next up is the PTO update. I know that we have a few new members to the board. Back in the fall, we were discussing some of the different groups at Rettentown, and the PTO is one of the ones that is not under the purview of the school. They have, they have previously, excuse me, had their own account and their own EIN number. As time's gone on, that has fallen off, and they no longer have their own EIN number, so they're using the school's, which is fine, because that's where the money's going anyway. But they really probably should be under the school's purview, then. I have, Marcia, I, I see your comment. I actually did reach out to Amy Simmons, and I was told that they do use the school's. And she was, she's a treasurer for the PTO. So Louis had recommended that we ask them to shift to under the school's purview, if they don't have their own. Did I miss anything, Louis?
No, that's correct. So if they're using the outside, that's the number that they're counting. The account is going to be on their, you have to call it now.
So, it, it won't really change a lot for the PTO, except that they would just, instead of going to the bank on their own, they would deposit money that they get from supermarket bingo, or different sales, to the front office, and the front office would then deposit it to the bank and keep track of the accounting for it. So it really won't change a whole lot, just actually, it might make it a little easier for some of the parents involved, because there's one-stop shop, drop off the kids, drop off the money.
It also makes the transition from, from one treasurer or one president to another a lot easier, rather than having to change the bank account based on merit. It all stays constant on merit.
Agreed.
Because we do see a lot of turnover from year to year, as, as parents, parents change and kids graduating, stuff like that.
So, how would we go about getting that to happen? Do we need a motion to do that, or is that just something that should happen?
I don't think we need a motion. If that's the board directive, I think just putting that in the minutes, and then Sarah and I can make sure that whoever's been charting PTO knows that, make sure that...
Where's the money now?
So the money's in a bank account somewhere.
Presumably, under a EIN that has some filed tax returns in quite some time, I guess.
Probably, but I, I'm not really sure. They don't know the EIN. They said that they don't have one, when I asked.
What is EIN?
It's a...
Like a tax ID.
Tax ID.
Oh, their tax ID, gotcha.
...identification number.
Thanks for asking that question.
Sorry.
I was gonna look it up later.
Sorry, their tax ID, yeah.
So should they start over?
Well, they, they should take the money from, they should close that bank account and get it into the school's account under the PT, it will be the school's PTO account that is still the PTO's money, but the school will keep track of it.
So Sherry would take that, and there would be a line for the PTO?
Exactly.
A what?
Student activities fund account.
Okay.
So, so I think we would need a motion for that from someone.
We do need a mo, I didn't think we did.
Well, if you're, if he's asking for a directive...
I guess I'd make a motion that we act as a conduit for the PTO's bank account, and keep their general accounting with us.
Any other comments?
By us, I mean, the school. Not myself.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I think the goal would be by the end of the year, school year, to get it converted over for next year. I think that's reasonable. Thank you, Sarah. All right, thank you, Louis, for your help on that. All right.
So, so Louis and I will reach out to the PTO, because I don't believe they have a president, or...
They don't right now, but they do, I believe, have a meeting coming up in two weeks.
Okay.
So if you reach out to Amy, who's been acting as the treasurer, and is the one that goes to the bank?
Yes.
And she is aware. She couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, not that it's, I'm sure it's not a large sum of funds, but presumably, if they had an EAN at some point, they filed for incorporation to the state, and, which means there's bylaws somewhere, so to properly wind it down, someone should at least research that. I don't know, it's probably a pain in the butt, but again, if they did have a tax ID, then there's some filing somewhere.
I don't know if any of the current people, except maybe Marcia?
We could search.
Know what's about the current...
Secretary of State website, just properly wind it down, and then, I think, potentially, put it on Sarah's lap, to have some sort of, I guess, like, what is the PTO? I mean, now we're housing their money, do they have any sort of overview of how they elect presidents, stuff like that? And now that's under us. Presumably, that would be in the bylaws and articles of incorporation that no one has, I'm sure, but...
Well, Marcia just said that she had done that EIN number when she had been treasurer years ago, so I think maybe if you speak with Marcia, she'll maybe be able to help out.
Yeah, and Louis, I'll touch base with you.
Yeah.
If they have a banking account, I mean, they should be able to check what the banking is, with EIN numbers on their account.
So, maybe we can follow up at next meeting, if they're, if they do have their own EIN number, if we find out incorrectly? So, why don't we...
And if they do have their, if they do have their own EIN number, and they are listed as a nonprofit, they should be filing annual nonprofit reports with the 990, with the IRS, so we would, I should know if they're doing that as well, because they should be listed as a nonprofit.
So it sounds like there's some digging that needs to be done. And we'll, we'll let Sarah and Louis do that, I guess. Sorry.
I'm all right.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda for director's order.
Because Louis is at a little league game, just, do I do the financial real quick, just so we can let him? Is that all right with you, or...
That's fine with me. Is that, okay. We'll move up the finance part. For Louis?
I don't have any financial support tonight, but if there's any questions, I'd like to take questions, and...
Louis, I, would you mind just speaking a little bit about the fuel oil being a little out of, just so that everyone's aware, that it's a little over the budget?
Uh, yeah, so I, I've been working with Kelly and Carrie and Sarah on the budget. I know there was a concern a couple weeks ago, that the fuel budget is significantly over, the actual is significantly over what actually we have budgeted. And that's mostly due to the price this year compared to the last few years. Right now, we're locked in at $3.65 a gallon, and the last two years, we were at $1.65 and $1.75, so almost doubled. I have looked at, and I don't have to report for the board tonight, but I do plan on bringing one at the next meeting. I did run a updated forecast, just quickly, for Sarah, to make sure that that overspend was not gonna throw us into a deficit position. And based on my just quick estimate for her, we are still looking like we are in a surplus. I told her just to be cautious with her spending for the remainder of the year, just so that we don't go into a deficit for the remainder of this year. But based on my estimates at the time, which was about two weeks ago, I felt like we were still in a surplus situation, even with, even with the overspend in fuel, because we were showing some significant savings in a few other lines.
Thank you, Louis. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, thanks, enjoy the game.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to the attention.
Handles a thermostat in this building.
I don't know. I don't know.
Why?
What's that?
Why? Well, so I said that. I did. I, when I, that came, I'm like, shut off the heat. And then I think one thing, so Kelly balances, you know, the rooms and it was still chilly. And we did send an email saying we're gonna, you know, turn the heat down, dress warmly. But, you know, then I think sometimes this is the warmest place kids are at during the day. And some of the rooms, especially in that open wing, get chilly. Some of them don't. So we're being cautious. Yeah. That's, that was my first statement. I said, shut off the heat. Where go?
All right.
Sophie was complaining about, she's like, it's cold in this house. I'm like, it's 68. It's 68, 365 days a year in this house.
What is Louis' turn?
All right. So moving on to the director's orders. Anyone have any questions? I need. I had a question about the student activity accounts payable. Do, so for the caps and gowns, we purchase those every year. Is that correct? Or the, or the families end up purchasing some of them?
We had money in our student activities account to pay for those.
And then the students keep them?
Yes.
Have we ever rent, like, bought and then just used multiple years?
No.
Why?
We can look into it.
Yeah.
Some kids like to keep their hats. We definitely have some parents that donate back to us for when kids were buying them.
But the kids, well, yeah, the kids either buy them or they keep them, right? Right now?
They keep them, yeah.
Because I, I don't think a lot of kids use them after that one night.
No.
And they, a lot of them still grow, so they're, it's not, I mean, it's, it seems like something that it would be more sustainable in if-
To reuse caps and gowns?
At least the gowns.
The gowns, yeah.
Maybe get a new cap every year. But the gowns, I, they just get thrown out a lot of times.
It all comes in one package.
It comes in one package, is the thing.
Well-
And then you, the tassel comes with the year, so we'd have to get, you know, order the tassels, which I'm sure is a lot cheaper than the cap and gown.
And I guess we should look at cleaning them, how much that costs. Thank you, Marcia, I was gonna get to that.
Then we gotta store them.
Right.
And then we gotta take them out and iron them.
Well, depending on, yeah, steam them.
Yeah. No, we do. I bring my steamer, we steam them for kids. I'm sure Marissa-
You do it every, you do it every year anyway, right?
Yeah. I bring curling irons, tights, like, the whole thing. Who needs what? Shoes. Mrs. Babylon has given her shoes to graduate before.
Well, I'm just curious if, if it makes more sense to do that or not. I don't know. Maybe it costs more when you consider dry cleaning. I don't think storage is a problem right now, because we have-
It's gonna be.
It, it might be or might not for a while. Right?
So would you like us to reuse the caps and gowns and stuff?
I don't know. I think we should look at it and a cost analysis. What do other schools do?
They, the students purchase some and we, we have, families will donate a gallon back. So we always have extras in case a student forgets theirs or-
Same.
Just to, if someone is having a, you know, hard time purchasing one, but they said the students will, you know, buy their own. And like as Jeff said, it's typically a package deal.
And they're really not buying them because you got the money in the account, right?
We did this year, yeah.
This year, but last year, we bought them.
We had, did we, I think we had-
Or we had, I thought we had to pay towards them.
I think we had money left over from DC, so we were able to use that for caps and gowns, because still had-
But sometimes families have to pay for them?
Mm-hmm. Or we have.
Yeah.
I've paid for caps and gowns for kids that can't. And we have some extras, just like Chris said.
What does the board think? Should we look into it or just continue on right now?
I'm in favor of, I guess, alternatively funding it, but I think every kid should have their own packet. My kids aren't gonna wear someone else's. Not that I'm anybody special, but just right of passage. And if we gotta build in the budget, it's not a huge line item, but I'd encourage people who want it and can afford to donate towards the cause, but I think we could provide everybody a cap and gown.
So we can look at that for budgeting for next year?
Mm-hmm.
Though it sounds, it sounds like sometimes you find it and-
Sometimes we do, yeah. So when we can buy them, we have.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to, I need a motion for them to accept the orders.
Director's orders? I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim.
Take it.
We don't need seconds, because we're doing small boards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then approval of the minutes. Any comments? On page 10, there was a note that says, "The below support staff list was included in the contract recommendations provided to the board in their packets. However, support staff was not included in the above motion when it was made." If we go back to nine, page nine, I had asked Chris about confirming that the contract recommendations were for informational purposes for those support staff. That's why they were not included in the contract recommendation. So that note, I believe, can be removed. And then there was just a small little typo on page four. So now I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve minutes of those edits.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Colin. Superintendent's report?
Thanks, Dee. I have a few items to go through. I know most of these Sarah will, I'm sure, kind of expand upon, but the Cognia VITCAP test window opens tomorrow. That'll go through May 26. I know that it was yesterday that Lisa Madison, the GRCSU Assistant Superintendent, sent out a, an email letter to all the families, kind of explained VITCAP, Cognia, so just brief overview of what that is. I know that the concern that we've had is the, around the administration of this, while it's very similar to S-PAC, it's still, it's relatively new. We know that, we just were meeting about this yesterday, and we were learning that the, they're still having issues with the administration and the test manual going out. The good news for us is that with the test window opening up tomorrow, and with us going on spring break, there are a lot of schools and districts that'll be doing the VITCAP or Cognia next week and kind of will serve as like the beta or, you know, so they'll work through any kinks. So when we come back and we begin testing, hopefully we'll have some new updates, which will kind of maybe alleviate some of the stress and some of the concerns. But Sarah could talk a little bit more about the testing schedule and what this means. The concern that we've had on our end is just the correlation between S-PAC as we look at achievement and scores, but we'll know more after the assessment, I think, in the summer, when we start to get information from the OE, how they're going to utilize this in terms of the report card and things along those lines. So once we have that information, we'll message that to local districts as well as the SU Board. The strategic planning, we had our last design team meeting last night at West Rattlin. The design team is comprised of a variety of students, staff members, parents, board members, administrators. We, this meeting regularly for the past three to four months, just look at the strategic plan draft. Last night was the last opportunity for the team to kind of give feedback, give input. We now are taking it back and working with this, and we're, Mattel for Kids, who is the organization which is overseeing the portions of graduate and the strategic plan. And we, our goal is to have a draft, well, our, our goal, we will have a draft ready to go for the June GRCSU Board meeting for adoption slash review. We also have built into the schedule that if the board has any recommendations or suggestions or edits, that we would then go back and we still have the month of July to go through. The rollout would be this fall, but I know that just looking at the draft, many of the items that are in the strategic plan are already currently taking place, will be smooth transitions, so it will not be a shock to the system for staff or for students. It will be a very smooth transition. You'll see a lot of the elements of school-based SIPs, you know, SU-based SIPs or the recovery plan are, are being kind of woven into this as well, so. All right. Graduation dates, I know Sarah will talk about this, but we have set graduation dates for all SU schools, you know, I'll wait to, Sarah reveal the graduation dates. I won't take that from you. And the last part in there is just the legislative updates. We are waiting to hear more. I know I reached out to Jeff Francis to see if there's anything new and said, right now, we're just kind of waiting to see. There are a lot of bills are still just sitting, you know, like the Senate's, just, you know, a lot of discussion. The one that we're keeping a close eye on obviously is around, you know, tuition as well as PCBs, school facilities. We do have the, you know, Rattlin Town is scheduled for PCB testing this summer. It's July 1st through September 30th, I do believe is the window. So depending on what happens in this legislative session, we may see that paused or we'll move through. But if, you know, regardless, we'll have a plan. So I think, you know, by this time next month, we may have a better idea and then Sarah and I can talk about what the sampling will mean and we could talk about what we've seen in some of our other schools and how best to proceed with that, so. All right.
PCB, what's that mean?
Polychloroalan, bioethanols or something like, it's, it's something with, it's a chemical that's in the 70s that was found in-
Oh, okay.
Cauc and, you know, Burlington High School is, that's why they shut down the school for that, so. Yeah. So that, this was passed and, you know, like I said, it's, the concern has always been in terms of the impact it's going to have on schools, that if PCBs are found in our school, we have to shut down maybe a classroom or a wing or potentially a whole school for, while we mitigate or remediate this and the disruption that would be to learning as well as just the cost that it may result.
Over a three-year span or so, they're going into all schools in the state and doing a study.
Right. And the concern is the funding. They have earmarked some money, but it's, right now it is on a first come, first served and it's been very, it's been an interesting process on the backend, I'll just say that, so, but-
Chris, with the V-CAP testing, there has been some information just flying through about it not being compatible with our Chromebooks. Have you guys heard that?
There are, there are issues that we're, we're continually working, Al Gregorich, Greg Connors and Milts are, I think, in communication with the states. I think they're not the only ones, just, I think we're working through the, the kinks. You know, this is something which I, really should have been rolled out much sooner, but I think the procurement process was delayed for whatever reason. And so they, they told us that we were making the switch last spring and then it wasn't until this fall that we started to, you know, go through this. But, yeah, so it's, it could be an interesting testing window. So I, I wanna thank the, you know, or I wanna thank the staff and the students in advance for their patience and their understanding to work through this, so, but-
What would the students possibly do if they went a period without testing, you know? Better get it.
I, well, I mean, right, I think we'd have to break for the students, that we may have to pause, I think, you know, but, yeah. So I, I really don't know. I think, you know, they said, the benefit that we have is, I'm sure there'll be some schools and some districts that'll start testing tomorrow or next week and we'll really work through some of the kinks.
I just think, we just gotta keep in mind that could add, add some stress onto kids.
Hundred percent.
You know, it's stressful for the kids anyways, testing, but add that on to it if they're having a hard time logging in and stuff, I think it might just-
Yes.
Be something conscious of for our kiddos who are taking it.
Yep.
I just have one quick question. Is there any discussion of alternative funding besides the education fund for the universal school meals? Have you had any-
There had been discussions, but from what I've heard, no, that's, that's the intention to fund through the Ed Fund, so.
And so, just correct me if I'm wrong, but, so that comes out of our local budget, right? Like that, so we go, so that'll be a line item in our budget that we go out to, to our constituents, right? And they look at our budget in terms of like education. But, but a large part of that could be just feeding 350 kids, right? I mean-
Yeah, I think, you know, if you want-
Seems like there should be other funding-
If you want, I think Louis and I, we could put that on the agenda where we could discuss the impact and what that would look like on budgeting at the next meeting. You know, we could actually have a nice graphic and things for, you see-
Yeah, I mean-
We can talk about that, so.
I had seen like, I've, I've gotten emails personally-
Yep.
About, you know, about that, and I know there's a lot of people on board. It'd just be great if it's such an, such an integral part of-
Right.
You know?
There are concerns with this. One, you know, there was a program in place that's for families that needed assistance would, you know, us, you know, take care of, you know, with free and reduced lunches, you know, free and reduced meals. The concern in having worked in New Jersey in a similar program in Illinois, where it requires on paperwork being turned in and submitted for reimbursement. And I think that's what, I think a lot of Vermont schools are finding is that, you know, other states and have known long, for a long time, it's, it's very difficult to get paperwork back. And so, and when that paperwork is tied to funding or it's problematic, I think, so these concerns have been shared. I know at our last VSA meeting, you know, when we did kind of had representatives and senators there, that we, these concerns were to share with them individually, but, so.
So free and reduced lunches, did that come out of education fund or did that come out of like?
Federally funded, right? Title I, federal funds. Is that going away or is that?
It's interesting, we, we don't know what's gonna happen. We're gonna see what, that's why I think we're waiting to see what the, the final piece of legislation looks like. You know, we've heard a lot of conversations, but we don't really know what that's going to look like, so.
So then should we wait, should we wait till the June meeting then to talk about that, instead of putting it on next month?
I mean, I think we can look to see where we're at, you know, you know-
Just touch-
We may have a better idea, you know, in a week's time, I think, so.
Okay.
I mean, we, there haven't been many updates since, I think, the 31st of March, the end of March, but there are a lot of bills currently being discussed at the Senate level and, you know, committee level, so.
Okay. Thanks.
So I think that'd be something, if we're, we can have a conversation. We can still discuss the impacts of this, you know, next month as well, so, if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I just saw an email personally a couple of weeks ago that had me thinking about it. There's, I mean, truly, I'm sure there's a ton of positives to it, but the education fund isn't, you know, it's finite, right? So it's like, and I, I felt like we found out over COVID how much they ever, they rely on the schools to do a plethora of things outside of educating students and things like that. So this just seems to be like, you know, another instance of, you know, using the education fund for, for another purpose.
Yeah, you know, the spirit of it, I think, is well-intended.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think anyone here is gonna disagree, that's, we should be, you know, helping those who need assistance, but I think-
Who's gonna pay for it?
The devil's in the details, right? And I think that's what we're all kind of waiting to see. And I think, Tim, I think a lot of boards, superintendents, administrators share that frustration, there are a lot of things coming, you know, through the legislative sessions just being placed back on schools and it becomes more and more problematic in terms of figuring out how we're going to, to do this or how we're gonna staff this or, and while, like I said, it's well-intended, but it's just, it's, schools can only handle so much, so.
For me?
And that's why I said I give credit to our administration, our staff each day, because they, they take all the stuff that's there and they do a great job with it, you know, and they still figure a way out, you know, get it done, but it's, it's difficult to done.
Propose like a state-funded, I guess coordinator to help people file paperwork. I mean, free and reduced lunch is a great program when you run it right and it's a net neutral for the, the local taxpayers, but obviously- the, the local taxpayers. But obviously I'd assume we don't have any, as big issue with our demographic as a urban area does. But at the state level, I figure if schools are having problems with paperwork, we can provide that. But.
That was one, one of the requests is that you have to fill out this paperwork. And Tracy Sabaka, our family school coordinator is wonderful with parents. Sometimes it's a pride thing. Sometimes it's, this is confusing paperwork. And I said, can they simplify this and do it online? You know, we've, I've requested that, but you would think, you know, can you just do this online? And I think instead of having their child even put it on, bring it to the office, you know, there's many things that I just, this should be simplified. So I think that's a great suggestion. We have a tough time getting those forms back.
Yes. That's, I think all schools are struggling with that. So just.
And an emphasis on our, you know, soon-to-be after-school program, hopefully that it ties into Boys and Girls Club funding and keeping those costs down if people do do the paperwork. And.
Thank you. Principal's report.
Thank you. Lots of stuff on here. I did give a shout out to the rock climbing team last meeting, but I wanted to officially put it on paper. They got first place in the state championships. Some of you may have seen, or fifth graders, pardon me, received a grant from the Rutland South Rotary to purchase books for individuals in the classroom library. I have been roped into the Wonderfeet Kids Museum lip sync battle. Rutland Town is competing against West Rutland. So there has been a little bit of banter back and forth. So thank you to Linda Mullin for leading that up. There's a group of us that will be performing on April 29th. We had practice after school today and it should be a fun time. Ms. Key Faber and Ms. Cornell led our spelling bee for the first time and Haley Zlaski competed in the Vermont State Spelling Bee in Montpelier on the 21st. So there were 51 contestants from fourth through eighth grade and she made it to the third round, which was awesome. So we had a great, huge group of kids for that. I was very thankful for both of you for doing that. Thank you, Marissa. Alderman Chevy dealership has partnered with Sweethearts and Heroes again to bring back their social, emotional, mental health initiatives to our school to talk about bullying, gain awareness, what to do when it happens. So we have an assembly coming on May 4th and then they'll come back again on May 5th to do some circle work with some of our middle school students on how to respond, which is great. Kindergarten registration, I'm just giving an update on that because we're at 34. We were at 30, I believe, the last month. So that's great. We'll have a good cohort of kids headed our way. As Chris had mentioned, we are testing pretty much now through the end of the year. So we started MAPS testing and Cognia, as Chris had mentioned, or VITCAP opens up Wednesday and we start that with our fifth and eighth graders after break. Let's see here. In a moment, I'll ask Mr. Rowe to talk a little bit about Camp Chinga Cook. So I'll skip over that for the moment. Lacrosse softball and baseball started and we have memorandums of understanding for lacrosse with Rutland City, Mill River, Mike?
Still waiting.
Still waiting for that. And West Rutland for boys and girls. So I'm really happy that we're able to partner with some of our neighboring schools because then we're able to field a team. The second floor expansion's happening April 25th. Hiring update, we are still, we are in desperate need for nurse substitutes as well as regular substitutes and we are, still have an opening for a par educator. If anybody's interested, give me a ring. Those positions are posted online. A few things that I've already mentioned about the building update is the fire safety. That'll happen next week. Thanks to Jeff for mentioning our road signs. They only say Rutland Town Elementary. So David Sears is going to change those out. It's on his list to do. So it'll say Rutland Town School. Our ice rink, it was not a good winter season. So the ice rink was not used and it is a ton of work to assemble, community, I mean, the, the fire department comes. So that is almost put away for now. Sports fields are aligned, getting ready. Kelly's continuing to work with efficiency, monitoring her air quality. And I had already mentioned the NBF architects and I, I did send Kelly an email just to see if we can get some estimate on time when we'll hear back from them. We have a lot of upcoming dates. This evening at 5 o'clock, I had a meeting with our eighth graders and their families for Washington, DC. So we had our last meeting with the tour company, went over the packing list, the itinerary. So we're good to go. I'll meet with the eighth graders probably a week before we leave just to review rules and some other things. We have, as you've heard, Little Mermaid tomorrow and Thursday. So we hope to have a good crowd for that. I mentioned the lip sync battle. I cannot forget. I'm so excited for our staff versus student basketball game. So we're bringing that back. The staff have won, I think, every year. So we had to take a little bit of a pause. I am horrible at basketball, but I love to play. I think Mr. Audette had to have his inhaler out last time. Somebody may have blown out their knee, but hopefully no injuries and we'll be fine. So we're excited to bring our student versus staff basketball game just before dismissal on Friday back. We have spring break, Rainbow Club meeting, our, we have our Organization for Social Media Safety Assembly that Ms. Daly and our school resource officer is bringing here, which would be great. A lot of feedback from parent, at parent, Rutland Town parents asking them, asking, pardon me, the school for help in regards to monitoring social media with their children. We have the GRCSU art show, which it kicks off, it's listed a few times here, at Castleton University Bank Gallery. So the opening is May 4th from 6:00 to 7:30, but it'll run through the month of May for all those that are interested. The Friends of Music sponsoring the band and chorus trip to the Blue Man Group in Boston. I'm meeting May 9th with our current seventh graders to talk about DC for next year to start fundraising for that. And then we have, I have a meeting on the 10th with eighth grade chaperones that will be going with me this year, eighth grade parents that are chaperoning with me. And we have our Rutland Town School graduation for eighth graders will be on Wednesday, June 14th at 6 o'clock here. And then I included a picture of our amazing par educators. We celebrated them. It was National Parrot Educator Day last week. So just a shout out to our amazing par educators that work with some of our neediest kids in the building, day in and day out. We couldn't do our jobs without them.
When did you say graduation was?
June 14th.
Okay.
And if it's okay, I wanted Mike to talk a little bit about Chinga Cook. I had put that in here. So I'll let you kind of.
Do you want me to move to a different spot? Am I good right here?
You're good, Richard.
So just moving forward, for those of you that know, and Ms. Key Faber has also attended back when she was here, we've gone to Chinga Cook for many, many years. It's a seventh grade trip that we take in the fall. We usually go the first couple of weeks of school. We've done various timeframes over the years and we've settled on one that's worked really well for probably the past five or six years. And then COVID kicked in and nobody was doing anything. So we went to an alternative plan, which worked really well. But we'd really like to get back to the Chinga Cook trip in the fall. And so exploring that, the cost has gone up like everything has gone up. And I can't stress, I've been to many different camps with many different kids for school things. And this is one of the favorite of our kids. And it works really well for our kids, routine building, cohesiveness, and it gets them to go out of their comfort circle. They're there for three nights, four and a half, or three and a half, four and a half days. It works really well because they can immerse themselves and feel like they're somewhere different rather than going for a night. There's no real benefit. I mean, there is, but the longer you're there, the more you are, you're buying into it and the more you get that experience. So we have tentatively set dates for next fall and we're, we're hoping that you would endorse us going. But it is expensive. And one thing I would like to say is that when you're building your budget, Washington, DC, Chinga Cook, and the sixth grade trips, if you could potentially put in money to cover half the costs, so parents aren't fundraising, you're supporting these trips as a board. So I think it's only fair that you support partial payment to relieve payment from parents because it's very expensive for a kid to go and it only going to get more expensive. Some kids, when my kids were here and we went on different trips, we paid close to $2,000 to $3,000 for our kids to go on all their trips. That's a lot of money. I mean, I was able to afford that. So I'm asking that when you're putting your budget together, that maybe you put 20, 30,000 aside to cover the cost of the half or a portion so that they're not fundraising all over. It's all, in our town, it comes out of the same pocket. And so just a plug for the future, but we would like to go back to Chinga Cook. It is not in the budget. It is almost, I don't know, what was it, like 75% more than it was before? But it is extremely worthwhile for what they offer for our kids. And our kids, when I talk to kids that come back, that's one of their highlights. And Ms. Key Faber will tell you that is a highlight, just like DC. Those are highlights of our, from our kids, that they say, are you still going? Did you do that? And they know because the program kind of stays the same. But obviously the kids are cycling through. And it's, it's a great worthwhile experience for our kids. But like anything, it costs money. And it's, the, the hard part is that it's right at the beginning of the year is when we go. Because that's when we find, we get the seventh grade, they've just transitioned from sixth grade and fifth grade, and now they're going into four different teachers and they're moving all around a lot more. And obviously a seventh grader is completely different than a sixth grader. And so mentally, it's a great starting point to bond them together when they're going through all those changes in life. So it's a tremendous experience and we would encourage anybody to attend it. We've had many parents go over the year and just are very in awe of what goes on. So.
So you will be looking for chaperones?
Well, to be honest with you, we used to, but now we, unless we need to, we like to just keep it teachers. Because then the kids are, you know, if we need to have a parent chaperone for medical reasons, whatever, yes, we do without a doubt. And we, we've done that before. But we've found that with four or five teachers, we have enough chaperones that are needed for the activity. Because the chaperones that go, once you step off the bus, the chaperones are in charge of making sure they're in their cabins. And that's about it. Because the camp takes everything over and runs all the programming. So the chaperone is basically just standing, making sure that everything's going okay. They're not really involved in that, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Because they really do such a great job of taking the kids and putting the kids through the paces. So it's pretty cool.
So I have not been able to attend Chinga Cook, but I've attended the team building that we did this fall, which was amazing. And I always go to the kids first and I echo what Mike said. All the kids that come back for class day when they come speak to the graduates, they say DC and Chinga Cook are those two things that really stand out the most. So I echo everything that Mike has said. So I did put the cost in here. So it's four-day, three-night, September 12th through the 15th. It's now $425 per student plus the transportation. So just for busing, it's about $1,000 to get them there and back. And so Sherri had sent a survey out to parents to see, are you able to pay? If not, what could you pay? So right now we would need approximately $2,000 to pay for those that need help, need assistance. And four parents did say that they did not want their child to attend. We didn't get 100% return on the survey, but close to it, about 75%.
So of the four parents that said they didn't want their child to attend, was it cost or was it some other reason or they didn't say?
They didn't say. And there's a few kids that are not going to Washington, DC as well. But they're still expected to be at school.
Do you feel that parents were honest with whether or not they could pay or not?
We always do, usually Sherri and I do a buffer because we don't, we know that some parents that don't respond, we, we kind of look and say, you know, I would expect this parent and this parent will need assistance. Because we've done this with Washington, DC. So we kind of have it down to a, it's probably similar to Louis, you crystal ball it.
So are you having a meeting with the parents to talk about fundraising options or anything like that between now and September?
I'm meeting, I need to meet with seventh grade about fundraising for DC and that just keeps going up and up, just like everything else.
No, I think money-wise, we'll have to wait and see where we're at by the end of the year. I don't think we can, we're tight forecast right now. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about it. I mean, three of us also have children that are in sixth grade that will be on this trip. So I feel like maybe we should.
Is this an ask?
No, I, I don't know if it's an ask from what you said, but I, I know that if, you know, if we have money left at the end of the school year, that's something to consider. But I don't think we can do anything tonight.
I think it's just that we need to get back to Chinga Cook, right, Mike? And I just, I, I was going back and forth and I'm like, let's just bring this to the board because we don't have it in our budget. We don't have it in our budget for next year.
It's just more about planning for the future and if we're really going to invest in this type of alternative learning for kids as well. And if we are, then we just need you as a board, hopefully would make a conscious effort to see that that opportunity exists for our kids. So we have to do some shuffling and what have you to make it work. That's fine. I mean, if we're kind of behind the eight ball in a way, because it never used to really be that expensive. So it wasn't a lot to ask for a couple hundred dollars is what it used to be.
Right.
And now it's not a couple hundred dollars. So, and we want to go back and start it because it is such a wonderful experience for, you know, just about every single kid in some capacity. So just looking for your thoughts and what we can do.
I definitely support the program. I had a daughter that went on it and one that missed it due to COVID. And I'm glad it's coming back. And I definitely will keep it in mind when we're, we meet at the retreat and start thinking about things. But.
So, so you need approximately $3,000?
Mm-hmm.
You should have $3,000 somewhere.
After that fuel bill.
I know. The fuel bill is over $50,000 more than budget right now. So that's why I'm saying.
Where's the surplus?
Well, Louis said maybe. He said he ran a, a kind of a loose forecast in that he'd get to us next month with a forecast. So I think we can talk about it better when we have more information.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think, I mean, we can do a show of hands of who supports the trip.
I mean, I support the trip, sure.
But.
I, I think, I'm in support of it all for the dollar amount for, I think it may come down to a, we need to book the space is my guess too. And we don't have a commitment to give them money they can book the space.
We could probably wait a month or two and you'll have a better idea on your financial because you roll over June, July 1st anyway, correct?
Right.
So I can let them know and I'm sure that they're, they're okay with that. I'm sure they deal with this on a daily basis with the schools and their programming. So I just wanted to get your feel and let you know how important I feel that that trip is for our kids.
I think it's a great trip too. So I just think we need more information financially just.
And that's fine.
Yeah. What were you going to say, Tim? I'm sorry.
This, something to kind of brainstorm on, because I was just thinking about this, like with like the theater program and stuff like that. Because you're asking for us to budget this sort of trip, which, I mean, I think largely this group would be on board for that. But five years from now, if this board is totally different and much more conservative or doesn't have a strong feeling in the arts or alternative learning, then you're going to be, you know, you're going to have that funding pull, right? So I guess my, so what I was like, I was thinking like, like how can we start to fundraise 12 months a year for, like, you said there's so many people have such great experiences, like it'd be great if like they would partake in some sort of fundraising effort, whatever that, who knows what that is, you know? Maybe it's a canoe race, you know, or something like that, you know? But I wasn't thinking of it for this particular topic, but I was talking to someone about the theater program and like how hopefully they build a coffers that they can be self-sustained. And, you know, it'd be great if like these types of programs could too. I mean, not for sake of my feeling, but 10 years from now, you know, if we're not on the board or something like that.
I mean, I think the school used to fund it. Many, Jeff, you would know better than I, many, many, many years ago, it was probably a lot less expensive if the school helped fund when the sixth grade went, when the eighth grade went. But things were so much, they were less expensive back then. And now it just seems to extrapolate the cost. So if you set the tone of budgeting for that, then it's, it's at least a foot that we can get started. It's a starting point to move forward and then, then you can fight to keep it. But if you don't have it, you can't fight to keep it. So that, I totally understand your point. In 10 years, yep. But by then, they will hopefully fight to keep what they have rather than, than vote it down. Do you know what I mean? That's kind of.
That's a good perspective.
It's just a thought. I mean, I know money's, I get it. I just, but we're starting, a lot of these trips are fantastic. And it's just, you're asking a lot of, a lot of money from taxpayers. And it's not that they don't fundraise, but like I said, there's. And it's not that they don't fundraise, but like I said, there's only a, it's all, it's, you know, I'm open for any kind of idea.
I think it's important to be mindful. I see that Marsha had put, you know, she does some fundraisers, like selling fudge and things like that. But that, you know, my first couple of years here, that was a lot of feedback from the community, enough with the fundraising, like bringing in the can and Hat Day and another perishable food item and, you know, you're selling candles and selling this. So now all fundraising has to be approved by me first. And it's just because parents were saying, this is too much. Like you are asking so much for fundraising. And then Friends of Music, PTO, now, you know, hopefully Friends of Theater will come back again too.
I don't disagree with that. So maybe it's a matter of like gone for the bigger opportunities, you know? Gone to, for a family that makes a hundred thousand dollars, looking for 10 or 20 dollars every three weeks could, you know, but maybe we built, you know, maybe someone goes to the hospital. But, you know, like this is, has to have great opportunities for health and wellness and mental health and things like that. Like maybe there, I don't know, you know, who their philanthropist is, but, you know, maybe there's a contact there, like I don't just.
No, it's a great idea. No, you, you, it's a valid, valid point. I mean, I'm open for whatever the board feels comfortable doing. I just really am passionate about the opportunities for our kids.
Yeah, no, so, I think we're singing the same song, same song, right? So, but, so I'll give it, I'll give it some thought too. Like you said, we got three kids that are looking at this trip, so.
I just think one thing we need to keep in mind, I'm all for, I'm outdoor education 100%, but I do, we, we have a changing community too in asking parents. I would hate it to be an opportunity that kids lose out on, because parents can't say they can't afford or parents going into hardship because they have multiple kids. I, I do think we need to look at that. I think over the years, Rutland Town has changed their demographics. And, I mean, $425, that's, I mean, for some families, that's a lot. I mean, I think, so I just think moving forward, I mean, with all field trips, I think we need to look at, how can we as a school board support a lot more, you know, like these opportunities than asking, you know, families to pull it out of pocket? But I'm 100%, you know, and even, even asking, you know, families. I mean, I don't know how we would do it, but I think we really need to look at that. Not just for this one, but how do we fund these opportunities for these kids? Because some of these opportunities are the only ones they're getting.
And I think that's why I'm so passionate. Like I've been to DC three times and some of these kids have never left Rutland, ever. You know, and the one student in particular that I still talk to, you know, in the hotel, like, I want to stay here forever. And I'm like, oh, in DC? That's awesome. She's like, no, this hotel. And I was like, cool. But she never left Rutland, ever. Um, so you know, this, and then she has internship at the hospital, I mean, every, but this opened her eyes just to a whole new world. So I agree. I'm, I'm.
You know, because fundraising is hard for parents too. I mean, you think about everybody's schedule, like it can be. So how can we, what can we do as a board? That we're not asking all the time, you know?
And that's a feedback I received from our eighth graders that have been fundraising for DC. They said, you know, it's the same parents, you know, they ask, can you make sure that those that are receiving scholarships, they are fundraising? And I can't make people help fundraise, but that's the biggest complaint. Because it's a group of parents and it's typically this, not all the time, but often the same parents. And, you know, I had a few that said, I'm just gonna write a check next time. Like I've put in so much time and money for these and I, you know, if we just donated instead, which I get. Parent has, you know, I get.
I want to thank you, Mike and Lisa for all the opportunities you do give the kids for, you know, out of school options.
If you need a chaperone, Tim and I will.
I like to think, you know, for every class, we get a, I don't know what's word stipend as far as these extracurriculars. This is a big part of education. I mean, I was fortunate enough to go to these, I didn't go to this. We had Holbert, I believe, at the time, but I went to DC. Stuff that I've remembered my entire life and, and arguably, I'd say I learned a lot more there than some other of my classes. So we should, we should, because it's learning life. I mean, a lot of Rutland kids had never gone. They don't get to go see urban areas. They go to DC, it's a completely different world, which is a big part of learning that Rutland's not the epicenter of the world, surprisingly. Do either have that line item that we're, we have 10,000 for the class seven, class eight, class six. But to Tim's point too, that also opens the door for a future board to cut that very easily. Thinking back to what we just did earlier, a small amount of research, there is articles of incorporation for the PTO. I'd see that as a conduit, potentially to go back to an idea like that, instead of bringing it under the school, keeping that as a separate entity, 501(c)(3), where they could fundraise for that particular point and use those funds to help offset the costs of extracurricular school activities and do some fundraising on that end versus having kids or parents do it, getting grants and subsidies through that. If we can't get it done at the board level, that's an organization that can be tied underneath us, but separate with charitable donations for, for donors that we could be doing for. If we have a problem getting the funds and that could live on its own too, not inside the school budget. So.
And I will say, it's a lot of work on teachers. I mean, teachers and, you know, there's a group of us that have spent a lot of time at dances and other things that it's a lot of work.
Well, the fundraising, you're, the parents are buying most of it and then it's their friends and family. And for, for the children that need the most, they obviously don't have the contacts either. They're not in the demographic of asking their uncle to buy the $500 of candy that I can buy or my mom's gonna buy every time and not go out. So it's not a good system. Why you get people just writing checks versus, I gotta want more chocolate.
I don't have a problem paying for this right now, but I understand Tina's, we need to look at our finances first, see where we are. Well, we can put that at the top of the list.
Excited for.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to hear about our? Any athletic questions? I know there's a provisional, I don't know what you called it.
Well, we're moving on, after you're done your report, we're gonna go on to contract recommendations, which would include that. So moving on, we have contract recommendations. We have three professional staff. Sally Alderman, Sally Hogan, and Erin Born. Erin, I believe, I don't know if you hear us, if you're still listening, it's been a long meeting. Did you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name's Erin. I have been teaching for nine years in the Rutland area. I taught at Little Liam's, it's a private preschool, and I've been teaching for four years at Manchester Elementary Middle School as a pre-k teacher there. So I'm excited to start hopefully my teaching adventure at Rutland Town, because I've heard wonderful things from other teachers and from families and I'm just excited to be part of the school community.
Thank you, Erin. Welcome.
Thank you.
And extracurricular, we also need to approve Michael Rowe, Athletic Director, Colby Hescock, Summer School Teacher, and Bailey Sanders. It says Summer School Tutor. Is that the same thing as a Summer School Teacher? Okay. And then there's a provisional acceptance for a lacrosse coach, Alyssa Sabatka, pending background checks and application. I believe it's last minute.
I have a long list of her credentials, if you want to hear, that I just sent by your mother.
Our third one. The first one, I wasn't able to do it. The backup has never got back. And so I've known Alyssa and coached Alyssa and her, her mother works here. And she has the credentials more than.
Oh, she's coached col, played in college, coached in college, is a Hood Player of the Year. I mean, her.
So I'm.
This is unbelievable to have this coach come.
That is on board. I mean, I would like to have her, she's planned to come on Thursday. And then hopefully take over next week. But that's with your approval, because she's applying and I don't want to do what's wrong. But at the same time, their first game is a week from, two weeks from tomorrow. So kind of like in a crunch, I know it's middle school, but it's still important to them and to everyone. So whatever you want me to do is what I will do.
So those are the ones we need to, I need a motion to approve. And then the support staff for Tracy Sabatka, Kelly Traia, Shawna Chamberlain, and Pam Mock. Those are just for information only. So is there a motion?
I'll motion to accept those.
Thank you, Abby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was unanimous. Thank you. And I didn't see any vacancies. So we're good. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Oh, I didn't see any specific vacancies, but there, there is a pack, packet.
Was a lacrosse coach on a different piece of paper or was that just?
It was just added as of today. It was provisional, pending background checks and her application. But she's expected to start Thursday and we're not meeting again until next month.
No, I'm with that, just didn't see your name.
Yeah, yeah.
Find wallet.
It was with Sabatka too?
That, I'm sorry, what?
That was with Sabatka?
Alyssa Sabatka.
That was Alyssa Sabatka. Yep. Okay. In your packet, after the vacancies, we are going to mention Executive Committee and SU highlights. The minutes from the March 22nd meeting were included in the packet. I don't think the minutes from the April, whatever day that was, 4th, I forget, meeting were put into the packet. Not a whole lot that I remember going, change from the March meeting. I think we talked about a few policies that were first reads that we'll be bringing back next month. We talked a little bit about the calendar, which was also included in our packets for next year. We had a conversation about moving the parent-teacher conferences in April from just before April break to the week before that, similar to this year. So that was done. And I think we're going to talk a little bit more about parent-teacher conferences through the strategic plan lens for next year. MTSS updates, we also received a MTSS presentation at the SU meeting on April 4th, which was very nice. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports. And basically what it is, is a system to try to keep kids in the classroom, regardless of whether they need a little extra help at first, to try to get them up to speed with everyone in the classroom or if they're ahead, to give them more advanced challenging work in the classroom so that they don't feel that they have, that they, they feel more included. And teachers use universal design for learning techniques to try to give support or extra enrichment as needed to help students get what they need while they're in the class. So this year, it was rolled out with a new system. And there's been a lot of meetings with different representatives from every school, giving feedback on what's working, what's not working. And from the update or presentation at the SU meeting, it was basically stated that they are still working on kind of tweaking it for next year, but they've made a lot of progress this year with what they've been doing. So that was kind of what I thought. Did you have anything to add, Chris?
Yeah, I, I just want to publicly thank Abby. Well, Abby was, did a ton of work her last year here in the SU. And I think, not really getting to see any of this come to fruition or work through this, but, you know, I think there are a lot of individuals who are getting credit, but I think Abby, you know, did, I said, a ton of work, laid out a lot of research, you know, so I just want to publicly just say thank you to Abby for all that work.
You're welcome.
And I think, Tina, you did a nice, I'm kind of capturing this. I think with the MTSS, having seen this in other states and for the past 20 years, excuse me, you're always going to be tweaking and updating and improving this process. It's, and that's, that's an important part of it for us. So I think we, we've learned a lot. I think our, there's a lot to be changed still, lots to be improved. And we're looking at, you know, getting feedback from staff, from our teachers, just about, you know, as we look at the next year, what, what that looks like in the next cycle of this. So, but it is important. It's, you know, like I said, it's nestled within Act 173. It's not going anywhere. But at the, at the core of it, it really is, it's best for our kids. It's gonna improve student learning, so.
Did you have anything?
No, I listened to Tiffany and Lindsay speak and Kevin as well at the GRCSU board meeting. And first year being rolled out, I think there's some, you know, changes that should be made in order to help, you know, students a little bit sooner in some, some situations. We're very fortunate at Rutland Town that we have, our universal instruction is very strong with our teachers here. And so we have a, we, we had a good system in place and change is hard. And I, I think that we have some room for improvement for sure. So I'm glad that we'll get some teacher feedback. And, and I think the new curriculum coordinator position will kind of lead this position, it looks like possibly.
It'll assist with transition.
Okay, because I think that's one of the things that Tiffany, Lindsay said, that nobody is kind of leading this next year. So I think that's important to have consistency.
The ABN team is gonna take a more of a lead role in this as well.
Yeah, that's great.
Where it's, where it should be. You know, our ABN should be meeting regularly to discuss some of that looks like as well, so.
Great, thank you. And then we are doing our quarterly board board's update. So.
Sorry, I forgot to hand this out.
That's okay.
So I shared before Rutland Town's school behavior data graph. So Al Gregorich printed this for us. We were even making some last minute adjustments. Even today, because we realized there's a little, some technical errors in here. So as I shared the last two times with this behavior data, is that in previous years, we had somebody that was documenting every single thing in the PFS room, in the Planning for Success room. So we had said that more larger incidences should be documented, not every single, like there's a little disagreement, so let's log that. So it, in looking at this in a meeting with both Mrs. Yado and Mrs. LeBlanc and Mr. Gross, we, we realized we weren't logging some things that should be. So when this first came out, I said, well, I know there was an incident here, here and here, and it wasn't in there. So we need to do a better job of logging some of those incidences. I think some of the positives have been our teachers, you know, the expectation that everybody has. And Abby, again, you did a ton of work with our middle school too, when you were with GRCSU last year, about when we came back from remote learning, students needed to learn how to behave at school again and how to communicate with each other. Most of their communication was through electronic devices or a large portion. So how to walk down the hallway, how to get in line, how to transition from classes. So I think we thought, they're middle school, they've been here since preschool, they're fine. It was like releasing animals into the hallways. So we took a step back and the expectation this year was we need to have some of those, just regular expectations, repeated, laid out, classroom constitutions, because before learning has to happen, everybody needs to feel safe and those routines need to be in place. So Abby, again, huge thanks to you. You really helped us with some of that and it was just nice to start fresh in the beginning this year. So some of the behaviors, there are some students that have specific plans that their data is elsewhere. I will say that the emotional and social needs, especially of our elementary grades are, are a lot. So although this may look really good, it doesn't really give a picture to how some days feel here. And if you have questions about certain grades or certain areas, that may just have to wait for executive session.
What program are you guys using? Where did you get this?
We're, this is Infinite Campus. So Al is able to pull information from, oh gosh.
It speaks to Educlima, right?
Yes, thank you. Educlima. Sorry, I always say Ed Plan, which is for special ed, so I can confuse, which speaks to Educlima. So one thing, Al had shared this with me last week and then I'm thinking, boy, this isn't right. This isn't right. And he realized that when we are counting resolutions, so for an example, it may be a conference with parents and students and a detention, it was counting those incidences more than once. It was counting it twice. So I think if anything, the conversation with this data has been really important. And that it kind of speaks for itself.
Sarah, are these just PFS room visits?
Yes.
They are. So this is only if they get sent to the PFS room. It's not like.
So this is if, so a student may go to the PFS room, but I'll just kind of pull up what we came up with, one second. About what we're specifically logging. So if, you know, a student last year got in an argument with a parent and came into school, somebody was logging that and that just wasn't necessary. necessary. So. So bus write-ups, restorative conferencing is included in there, and anything for a PFS visit. So a teacher may say, you know, again, the expectation is everybody has a take a break spot in their classroom. Last year, it was a lot of teachers sending kids out of their classrooms. So it's the everybody, the expectation story. I said, you gotta have a spot in your classroom for kids to just take a break somewhere within your room. Because sometimes that behavior was repeated, like, I'm just gonna chuck this and see you later, and I miss social studies, for example, and we needed to nip that in the butt. So some teachers may just say, you're in a bad spot, go get a drink of water, come back, go see Mrs. Yado, come back. And that's not necessarily considered a visit. But all incidents involving parents being called, that's documented for misbehavior or conduct, physical aggression, violence, those things are documented. So more of those bigger things.
So something I just saw, on the first page, it says bathroom play. There was one incident last year. And then you flip over to behavior incidents by location. It says there were three in the restroom last year. So.
So I'd have to go back to see specifically what that was. It could have been a fight in the bathroom.
So that wouldn't be considered bathroom play?
That would be, right. It had to, I would have to see what that's logged for. And that's what I did with Alan. Like, this doesn't make sense, and then we have to go find it.
And then?
Bathroom, sorry to interrupt you, Tina. So we did have a lot of, we did have vandalism in the bathroom last year. It wasn't logged because we couldn't, the devious legs, all the TikTok challenges. We experienced that just like everybody else here at Rutland Town. Knock on wood, it's been a really good year. I shouldn't be saying that out loud.
There's no challenges out there right now.
Right. So one of the things is that, you know, there was some vandalism in the bathroom, nothing too concerning, but in order for us to, I need to identify who's doing it. You know, I'm not just gonna say I wiped off some inappropriate words in the bathroom stall door.
There's no student tied to the behavior.
Correct. Thank you.
Because you can't put it in Infinite Campus if there's no student tied to the bathroom. So if there's, if there's like something ripped off the wall, but you couldn't get down to who was it there, you can't put it into Infinite Campus because it has to be tied to a student. So.
So are we looking at the same data or are you saying that the input has changed over the two years? Like?
Both. Right. So.
So we were over inputting as well as?
As well as there were much larger, last year was a very rough year.
So for baseline purposes, this year's probably more of a trend line than a?
Correct.
Going like last year. And we've taken steps to uniformly enter the data?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is like the monster changes, obviously, from.
Right. Like you look 75 in a classroom to six. And like in March, that was a, and I, again, if you have more specific questions, it may be tied to a student I could talk to you about.
No, 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 not, more like, what's a good trend line? I mean, I can't imagine we're gonna see this amount of progress every year.
No, never.
Or like the schools on fire last year, but trying to get a baseline.
Also stopped using Swiss too. Right?
Correct. But then at one point last year, they were, it was decided, Mr. Gross wanted to use Swiss and Infinite Campus, and then we said, let's, so Swiss was tied to schools that have PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, and our previous special ed director was able to give us that program. But some incidences had to be logged into Infinite Campus because some of those incidents had to be reported to the state. So then we were doing double the work. So we just put everything in Infinite Campus now.
Do you have a breakdown of by grade level or no?
Yes, I can.
I didn't know if it was in here. Is it?
I did not because I didn't want it to identify a certain.
True.
Grade or child.
That's.
I think it'll be interesting to see this again through next year's lens, just to see the difference from this year to next year, since it'll be more apples to apples rather than apples to oranges.
I agree. And there's, I think just the conversation has been important. And we went back to a number of things that I didn't think were correct, but maybe the resolution was, you know, April 3rd and it, Al stopped it at the 31st. You know, there were just...
Sarah, where do you keep the data on the students? You said you have some outlier students who have special plans. Where do you guys keep that data? Like?
So especially, like today, a case manager has data for a special education student that's not necessarily kept in here, unless it's more of a physical aggression transport.
Like if it has to go to Sears reporting or something like that, it's put in Infinite Campus. Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I just.
I think there, I mean COVID, but I think also, you know, time, it's just, times are different and technology. I mean, I had another parent today that really believes in their child is addicted to TikTok and, you know, can't get their, every week, I'm, I mean, with a couple of their parents tomorrow, they're like, what? And I'm saying, take the phone away. But I know it's not that easy. I know it's not that easy. But it's, you know, there is, I, you know, an addiction to that device. And we're very fortunate. I have a supportive board and community that some of the eighth graders, you gotta hand your phone into the TA teacher because you have a device. There are phones in every classroom. You have your Chromebook. But that is a battle with some kids. I don't have it. I left it at home and I know. And it's an addiction. You know, they need to be connected. So with that, some behaviors are on the rise.
Thank you.
We have a social media assembly coming on the 28th for anybody that wants to.
All parents.
An ongoing problem in society. It appears to me, we're in a good place, but what do you guys, not guys, but the administration, what do you guys take from this data? Do you think there's any areas of policies or procedures that we need to be focusing on with the trends and potentially issues that we could tackle at a board level? I don't need to drill into student to student, but is there anything you guys see that's particularly concerning that we could tighten up or needs to be addressed?
Ooh, that's a great question. I think we're just seeing an increase in trauma. As Abby said, we have, our demographics changed. I mean, we have two new homeless hotels that have opened up this year that, you know, is kids coming in with significant needs, significant trauma, and it takes, it's a hardship on everybody.
Yeah.
So I think just ongoing professional development on trauma, kids with anxiety. I mean, this testing schedule, there's, it is what it is, but it's a lot of assessment. And, you know, the admin team did meet to say we need to pare this down because it's a lot of testing on kids. There's a lot of pressure on kids for academics. So I think anxiety and trauma and just social, emotional needs of kids, because we need to make a comfortable learning environment before we can teach and before kids can learn.
Do you, do you feel that the use of your, the FastBridge Sabers has helped you guys identify issues? Like, are you guys using that data to, like, for interventions? Because it does look like, I mean, still, like, I mean, you think of you have an entire pre-K through sixth, eighth grade, right? And you've had six classroom behaviors all the way through, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean.
But that's for, from January to March.
It's still good.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's still great. I mean.
It's definitely different than it was last year, for sure.
Are you guys using those data points? Because you said social, emotional is huge. Behavior is huge. So has it been effective for you guys?
Yes, that, so our school counselors look, take all that Sabers data. I would say a couple are a surprise.
Yeah, not much.
Not much. But there's a lot of kids that, from all, you'd be surprised, from, you know, wonderful families that are struggling. So there's just, there's, I think, there's only so much time in the day to, that our counselors can meet with kids. It's just, there's a lot of kids that are seeking that support socially and emotionally. And I think another thing is that, you know, Ms. Sabatka works to give referrals for outside counseling and it's, there's no counselors available. I mean, I have kids in crisis that are on a waitlist for eight months.
Are there school counselors in the SU that act?
School-based.
They're school-based?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, they're, in times of crisis, we'll have our school counselor will assist other schools, but the same issues that Sarah's laid out, we're seeing in all of our schools.
I mean, I think nationally. I don't think it's.
So even if we found a position, we wouldn't necessarily be able to fill it to increase capacity?
Well, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I think if that, I, as we go into budget discussion, I think there, it's important for us to start talking about priorities. And I think that's if we look at, you know, we talk about experiential learning, you know, field trips, if that becomes a priority, then we look at, how do we find the funds? If we're looking at social, emotional, additional staffing, that becomes a priority, we look at, well, how do we find the funds? We look at within our current budget or those are exercises. So I'm not gonna say we wouldn't be able to necessarily find a qualified school counselor because I think we have very strong school counselors in our SU. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be easy, but either, but.
And I will say, when parents have asked to have counseling sessions at school, I've said no, for a couple of reasons. One, space. And two, it's very hard. Oftentimes, kids are talking about some of the toughest things and then they gotta go to math class. And it's just not appropriate space or time to have some of those really difficult conversations. So I said, that really needs to happen outside of school, but it's finding. And sometimes it's not the right fit, right? And then I have some kids, I'm never going back again. It's like, well, let's try to find somebody else, but then you're on the list again. And it's not just here. It's in the country. You know, we're in a, I guess the same, you know who's having a tough time? Literally everyone.
Public education, there's gonna be kids with trauma all over the place. There's nothing we can do with the home life. I would say, stepping back as a parent now and giving you some kudos that you've built a great environment here. And when I come in to Four Seasons or Four Winds, and seeing that all the teachers know all the kids, that's the biggest part. The kids feel welcome when they're here. You can't stop the trauma that's happening. You can't stop kids developing and there's always gonna be issues. But when I walk around and I know, I see teachers that aren't instructing my kid, talking to him, and that's, that's what I grew up with. And so, yeah, there's always been problems. But you've built a good chip and we have a good administrative team that's leading a great group of teachers that makes everyone feel inclusive. So thank you for that. And that's the best we can do. And the world's always gonna get crazy, but as long as kids feel safe here and they know, then they're known. So I appreciate that.
Our teachers are amazing. I have to say that. I mean, people say all the time, when you walk in here, you can just tell. These teachers love every single one of these kids. I'm like, yeah, that's why I became teachers. But it's not like that in every other school. I know that.
Thanks. All right. So.
I would just ask that this is shredded.
You want to?
Yeah, give it back to me. That's why I didn't put grades in there.
I just didn't know if you can pull grade levels and look at that, like internally, because that sometimes just is helpful, you know?
So we already spoke about the legislative updates under Chris's report. And we finished finance. So upcoming meetings and future agenda items. We have our next meeting, May 9th at 6:00 PM. And then we do have an executive session tonight to discuss security and emergency response measures, as well as a personnel issue I'd like to add on. So we're gonna need to take a 10-minute break to 8:00 PM. May have a motion to move into executive session.
Move, pick that motion?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.